Good morning and welcome to the June 28th Board of Supervisors meeting. Please join me in the flag salute. During our moment of silence, let's think about Peg Yates and her daughter who was in a serious accident. So during our moment of silence, think about them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, start out with Board of Supervisors matters Supervisor Vanderpool.
All right, well, I wanted to start off the meeting real quick with what has been occupying my time here of late and what excites me a whole lot is the newest addition to my family and Candace is going to be bringing up the picture for everyone to see right now. That is my, that's my beautiful daughter, Emmeline June Vanderpool. She's just a little doll and looks a lot like her father.
I don't think she looks like her mother.
It's been, been just wonderful to have her in our household and my, my son is really being a great big brother at the age of two with a newborn now in the family. So that's really neat and the next thing I want to talk about, not, not on a personal level, but I really wanted to commend and thank Waste Management of Tulare County for the work that they've done. This last weekend, they hosted a community cleanup event in the community of Highland Acres or Oakville and this was the first cleanup event that they've ever had out in that area. They did a great job. Not only did Waste Management provide the roll-off bins, but they also covered all of the disposal fees. So they had, I think, the over fifteen tons of waste were collected and it's in, that's pretty amazing to me considering there's only a hundred homes out there. And in all, they donated thirty-five hundred dollars in total of in-kind services to Tulare County and its residents and they did say there were a couple of residents that showed up with the trash that they had generated at their house for the last two years in a trailer. So apparently these free dump events go over very, very well in the community. So thank you to Waste Management and appreciate their efforts to be a local company.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you Supervisor Cox.
We received a report yesterday on Measure R revenue. To, to date, thirty-one point six million dollars, a million dollars more this year than last year, so only up about a three percent. Has been up and down, we, months we have six, seven percent increase and then other months, so one percent, but very, very good news for Measure R and the projects that are happening there. I did attend the conference last week with the rest of the board and Mr. Vanderpool was babysitting, changing diapers, doing things like that, but we did have a good conference. And I appreciated the subject matters, tree mortality, the water issues we're having, not only here in our county, but through, throughout the Central Valley. Today, we do meet with some waste haulers to discuss franchise fees. On Thursday, I have a pension ad hoc committee where we'll be discussing the issues that we'll bring up as a joint retirement board and Board of Supervisors meeting later in this year. And then next Wednesday, also Habitat for Humanities, having a ribbon cutting on a new open house in the Oval Area. And then, Mr. Chair, I would hope, I tried to keep mine short, if we could, during a public comment time, call upon our fire chief to give us a little verbal update on the, on the fires.
Sure. Thank you Supervisor Worley.
Thank you Chairman. I thought the conference went well. I wanted to publicly thank our clerk of the board, but she's on vacation, so we'll, we'll defer that till when she comes back next time, but I thought it was well organized, everything went very smoothly. I was pleased by the attendance. We had, sometimes we have counties that are not always at the events and it was good to see San Joaquin County there. Two members of the board were there. A couple of counties were absent and hopefully we'll get them back on board because we have really critical issues that affect all of us regionally and it behooves us to get together, not only to pick one of its brain, but also to strategize about how we might be more effective in dealing with those issues. But anyway, I thought it went very, very well. This coming Friday, ten thirty, the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority is having a press conference at Friant Dam on the signing of an MOU with the Bureau of Reclamation. This is a very critical part of moving forward with a plan to be submitted to the water, State Water Commission, to enable us to seek funding for Temperance Flat Project. And the Bureau has been a very stalwart partner at this point in time, having worked for about twenty years on a feasibility study, which is nearing its final completion and demonstrates that the reservoir is a feasible project. And they are, are going to assist us in the preparation of this plan, using this vast amount of data that they have collected over the years to, to help bring this application to completion. So a great event and hoping to draw more attention to this project. We were at our last meeting, we were addressed by Jim Patterson, Assembly Member, and the, the kind of understanding out there is that the sites reservoir in Northern California is way ahead of the Temperance Flat Project and that would be true from more of a political standpoint, but actually, they don't have a feasibility study there. Without a feasibility study, their project cannot move forward, or very difficult for to move forward. So we actually have some advantages in that regard, but we do need a lot of catch-up to do in terms of making the public aware, making the political folks aware of the progress being made on, on Temperance Flat. And this, this press conference on Friday is part of that design plan to, to bring to public up to date. So that's what I have this morning. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Rashida.
Last Monday, I attended the ribbon cutting for the Plainview Park. It was a project that's been going on, going for twelve years. And finally, money fell out of the sky and we had a community that was willing to take over the management of the property and they also owned the property that we converted into a park. And that was the Plainview Mutual Water Company. Hats off to the people in Plainview because they've wanted this park for a very long time and our RMA staff was able to put it together with grant money and also money from the general fund. And there were a lot of kids there and I'm sure it will be well-used. Also on Monday, there was a press conference in Fresno, which I was unable to attend because of the Plainview opening. Amtrak, the San Joaquin Valley Amtrak announced its seventh train in the valley. So we have more, we have times that are probably more convenient for the users of Amtrak and hopefully we will attract more users. They have a special running right now to where one full fare, paid full fare, you can get five additional tickets at half fare. So if anybody's looking to go north to Oakland, to Sacramento, even to Los Angeles, this is the time to do it. Take your kids on a summer vacation and a cheap way to go. And that's all I have.
Does that mean that we don't need the high-speed rail?
That's right.
Thank you Rashida. Well, I think that our San Joaquin Valley Regional Association of California Counties meeting was a success. I heard a lot of feedback from the people that were there from all over the valley and they seemed to enjoy the subject matter. I do want to thank Michelle Baldwin and Julieta Martinez and Melinda Benton for their hard work putting this thing together and, and kind of running the show. So they did an excellent job. It's the first time I'd ever been to the Chachancy. That was where we held the conference, but nice place, nice accommodations and thought they did a good job. We do want to thank some of our local sponsors. SP Goodland Asperies, Sutton Pistachios, Stafford's Famous Chocolates, and Plano Jerky for helping us fill the little bags that we gave out to all the people, kind of showing them what we got. And we had all the other corporate sponsors there too. We were very pleased to have had as many people as we did. So I also attended the ribbon cutting on the little park in Plainview and it was great to see the people out. Had a big turnout. I, I don't know, sixty, seventy people probably showed up and the kids were out there in their little dresses, the girls were, and doing their dances and stuff and it was kind of neat. It was really neat to see that community adopt that park and that's the key, that's the key to these parks, is getting the community within itself to adopt that park and keep an eye on it so that they don't let the, the bad guys go in and try to tear it up or graffiti it up. So, and I know the sheriff is going to be working very closely with his folks patrolling that area pretty heavily too, so we appreciate that. And that just about does it for my Board of Supervisor Matters. So let's move on to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak to the board on issues pertaining to the board but not on the agenda may do so at this time. Welcome.
Good morning Board of Supervisors. My name is Susannah Galera-Mourinho, you can call me Sam. Fed up a little bit. I'm resident for Tulare County. Mr. Vanderpool, thank you for being such a good representative. I am here representing today the Save Our Hospital. Just wanted to let you all know that we do have our office open currently at two oh five, Case Street. Our hours are from twelve to eight thirty and I brought a little packet for everyone to let them know exactly what the Measure I is. As my eleven-year-old granddaughter says, everybody deserves access to healthcare. Thank you and have a great day.
Okay. Candace, get the packets out to the, the sheet left up there, please, to the board members. Charlie, welcome.
Good morning. Good morning Board, Mr. Spodder, Mr. Sims. Congratulations Supervisor Vanderpool. I remember those times so, so long ago and the one thing I remember is fatigue. Yesterday, I took our youngest to DMV for his driving test and we'd been driving quite a bit and we tried to eliminate every risk known to mankind. So he goes off with DMV proctor and he comes back, I'm sitting on the bench, I thought, okay, I'll catch up on email. He comes back about three minutes later and I said, "What'd you do?" And he said, "You know, like you say, the guys in the fire trucks, when they monster-truck a curb, I ran over the curb with both tires." And, "Okay." He goes, "But on the bright side, I made an appointment for Wednesday." Keep going. So those are good times. Congratulations again. We've been very busy. It's always, when I say the Q word, that we've been quiet. We were quiet up until about June fifth and then we had our two thousand acre fire up in Kennedy Meadows, which there is no easy way to get to Kennedy Meadows. Station eighteen, all volunteer, Bureau of Land Management, they did a great job in that incident. We sent two local resource strike teams up there. A great incident, good call, under control with the weather conditions, they did a great job. Statewide, we've been involved with two different fires. There've been four major fires in the state of California and there've been probably ten that have been under three hundred acres or so. The major one is the Erskine Fire in Kern County and it's right behind a fire station up on Erskine Creek Road, just kind of east of Bodfish. Chaparral, small fuels, but basically a wind-driven fire that went through there, had fifteen hundred homes threatened. The original damage estimate was about three fifty, I think it's been downgraded to two fifty. We sent three resources up there. We sent a strike team leader, OES, which is a large green engine strike team, and then we sent several patrols, which are the smaller engines to get in to do structure protection and mop up. Did a great, great job. We still have one crew that's committed up there probably until this weekend. The Sherpa Fire in Santa Barbara County is ninety-five percent contained, that's right, about seventy-six hundred acres. The Border Fire, which is right on the border, is right at about seventy-six hundred acres. It's almost out. Again, that was a wind-driven fire. And then the two fires in LA, the reservoir and the Fish Fire that burned into what's called the San Gabriel Complex, one incident, that's, it's right about out. It's about seventy-five percent containment. So all in all, we had thirty-one personnel, nine apparatus, three overhead positions, and then one comms leader. And we're not even at the Fourth of July yet. So we have most of those crews back. I still have the one in Kern County that's down there mopping up and we get ready for a nice, safe and sane and all the hijinks associated with Fourth of July. But would answer any questions you might have regarding any of these resources and this is what it's been and it's June twenty-eighth.
Well, thank you Charlie. Appreciate the update and appreciate your updates and emails right, right along. I appreciate those too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to the board during public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and we will move to our consent calendar. Thirteen and six are to be pulled for a later date. Fifteen pull for separate consideration, sixty-one pull for separate consideration. Any other ones wishing to be pulled?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I need to pull number twelve so that I can recuse myself. That's a first five issue. And then thirty-eight and thirty-nine, I just wish to vote no on those. I don't need a staff report.
Thirty-eight and thirty-nine, okay. Okay, well, let's start with fifteen then, Mr. John Hiss.
Very, very quickly, we just wanted to make two corrections on the resolution. For request number two, we want to change warrants to cashier's check and we'd like to remove request number three. And that's the only changes.
Okay. Any questions from the board or anything?
Nope.
Entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Seconded by Supervisor Worley, seconded by Supervisor Rashida. Cast your votes, the votes unanimous. Thank you, John. Okay, let's move on to item, well, let's go to item twelve since that's...
I don't need a staff report, I just need to accuse myself. Motion approved. I'll second that motion.
Moved by Supervisor Worley, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Cast your vote. The vote is unanimous with Supervisor Cox abstaining himself. Let's move to item number thirty-eight.
Chairman, take thirty-eight and thirty-nine together.
Thirty-eight and thirty-nine together, okay.
I do not need a staff report.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion on thirty-eight and thirty-nine together.
Move, approve.
Moved by Supervisor Rashida.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Worley. Cast your votes. It's four, four and Cox against. Thank you. Okay, move on to item number sixty-one. Eric Coyne.
Good morning. This is, this is merely a budget adjustment, a budget request. The parks are principally complete. As a balancing act, as we close out the bills, we're asking for the flexibility to move grant money from one project to the next and to request up to fifteen thousand dollars in general fund monies if needed to cover the, the gaps in the expenses.
Any questions from board?
Motion approved.
Seconded by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Rashida. Cast your votes, the votes unanimous. Thank you.
If there's no other comments, I would approve, move approval to balance of the consent calendar.
I'll second that motion.
Balance approved by Supervisor Worley, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to items not timed. Item number seventy-four, review report from the county administrative officer regarding the county's space improvement and relocation project. Mr. Hiss.
Yes, good morning again. Whip this up real quick here. So, good morning, John Hiss, Deputy County Administrative Officer for General Services and Capital Projects. Going to be doing a presentation regarding the space improvement and relocation program. The purpose of the presentation will be to provide background regarding the program, outline current project scope and cost alternatives, establish a program review committee, outline recommended next steps, and seek direction from the board regarding the proposed project schedule and scope. The presentation will be structured in that order with a, with a program background, cost and scope alternatives, excuse me. Human Resources and Development County Council will be identified individually and then we'll discuss some immediate action that we proposing. Discussion regarding the program review committee, proposed project schedule and next steps, and conclusion and requested action. So the Office of Education used to occupy the building on the south side of Burl since nineteen seventy-eight, when it was originally constructed, and they occupied the building on the north side of Burl since the year two thousand. They vacated these buildings in December twenty fifteen. So the board has previously decided to relocate the Human Resources and Development Department into the building on the north side, IT to the building on the south side, Backfield Risk Management and Backfield DA. Earlier this month, the board decided to relocate the Sheriff's Office and Fire Department and we'd want to look further at the courthouse allocation of space. So the advantages of these relocations are that it provides a prominent and improved space for human resources, consolidates IT into one location, consolidates County Council into one location, creates valuable vacancies in the courthouse and government plaza, cancels lease payments for risk management and district attorney, and we have procured the services of DKJ Architects for the project as well. The program budget is five and a half million dollars and we have begun the preparation of conceptual plans for HRD and council with the consultation of the department heads and we have also developed project cost alternatives, which will be on the next slide, for the cost alternative A, which is the original scope, and cost alternative B, which is the cost savings approach. So here are the costs as they are proposed presently by each individual project. As you see, human resources and county council have been reduced to provide project savings and get us closer to our budget target. Regarding IT, it's possible that pending further budget review, there may be a need to transfer a million dollars for general fund purposes, which may reduce the amount available for that project. The courthouse and acres have their monies listed there as well. So the modified scope for human resources and county council eliminates non-structural, non-essential, non-functional items while maintaining the essential and functional components of the project. Regarding the Cigna property, the Tulare Acres Professional Center, of course, it was earlier decided this month to relocate the Sheriff's Office and Fire Department into that building. Look at exploring the establishment of a co-located dispatch center there with the regulatory requirements and costs that may be applicable. And it's possible that the net operating income from that property may offset the cost, which gets us further and perhaps even below our budget target. We will need to look at IT and courthouse further. In particular, IT building is, it's older, it provides extensive challenges, access challenges, structural, cosmetic challenges, a variety of different building challenges. For the courthouse, we'd want to identify the reallocation of space in addition to the district attorney to see what else may be allocated to departments in that building. There are some immediate actions that we would propose right now for board direction. First would be install cooling towers and digital controls at the buildings here on Burl and then improve the access ramps at the two buildings the Office of Education used to occupy. And so those could begin immediately if approved by the board this morning. As with the Cigna property, we'd want to establish an ad hoc program review committee to oversee the development of the project's scope and cost alternatives. The ad hoc committee would be made up of two members of the Board of Supervisors and then advised by county staff as identified previously and as identified for this project.
John, if I may make a comment. As I recall, we took action on these items at a previous meeting, which were not properly agendized and so it's really being brought back for us to confirm what we talked about earlier.
Correct. In relation to the Cigna property, those were on the consent this morning, all of the items that were approved previously, those were all taken care of this morning and then this would be to continue on with that same model for the rest of the program. So the proposed project schedules listed here, first would be HRD, they're the first phase of the project. They could begin immediately upon approval with the committee and working with the board to put together plans and specs and then move into bidding and construction. Council would happen after that for phasing purposes. Acres, the Cigna property, would also happen immediately as it's vacant right now. IT and courthouse would need further review and evaluation with the program partners and the committee and the board, of course. So it's respectfully recommended that the board receive this report regarding the scope and cost, refer the matter to the program review committee for final preparation of project's scope and cost alternatives. Direct staff to prepare project scope for the Tulare Acres property, courthouse and IT and thereafter, submit those documents to the committee for approval and ultimate referral to the board for final approval. And then direct staff to proceed with the cooling towers and access ramp improvements. So the formal resolution is receive a report from the CAO regarding the county's space improvement and relocation program, establish an ad hoc program review committee comprised of two members of the board, and provide directions to the county administrative officer to proceed with the project as identified.
Hey, John, a few members from the board are going to be Supervisor Vanderpool and Supervisor Cox.
Hey, don't we have a say in this or not?
You already volunteered.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. This is a new committee, so I, I know that's why Supervisor Worley spoke up earlier.
This was that sleep deprivation that was talked about by the chief.
I'm kidding.
Unless you don't, unless you don't want it.
I'm good, we're good.
Sure, I, I don't have a, I mean, there's specific action for today, I really don't have a comment on, but one thing I was thinking about is when we look at the Acres property and the concept of using rental income to offset some of the capital projects, I'm wondering if we had developed any kind of a budget because I know the immediate thought was to save these dollars because obviously buildings don't take care of themselves and so you have costs of maintenance and, and perhaps even capital projects in and of themselves that are required of the building. I'm just wondering, have we adopted or are we in the process of adopting some kind of a budget with that regard?
We can bring a formal budget forward. In the process of purchasing the property, we did a variety of analyses with, you know, our broker and so forth and with the one point four, one point five million of gross rent presently, there, the, the previous owner was pulling in, well, pushing a million dollars of net operating income and so depending on how we, you know, we move in, our, our folks in and costs associated with that, but there's also billing back, we're also conservatively looking at in that three-quarters of a million dollars of net operating income.
Okay. So that, that gives us a pretty good feel for how we're being able to take these excess monies, we will call them, to put towards the capital projects, reserving sufficient funds to take care of any immediate needs we might have with the building.
Yes.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, when we look at the cost alternatives, I know that it definitely, to me, makes most sense to go with cost alternative B because it's lower cost and we have a lot of unknowns still looming in the future. But just to, just to point out, if you look at the cost per square foot of making these buildings occupiable by these different departments, you know, sixty-eight dollars a square foot under cost alternative A, fifty-one dollars a square foot for rehabilitation under cost alternative B, we bought Cigna for eighty-four dollars a square foot. Bought the building. So it's pretty, pretty interesting how much it costs. Interesting, unfortunate, however you want to slice it, how much it costs government to rehabilitate buildings. But I definitely think we've got to be responsible in doing this and, and another point that I'd like to bring up with Cigna is there is a, a good chunk of the property that's actually vacant, not even vacant, but not even built on, on, on the Acres property. And I believe that that's very valuable real estate in Visalia. And I think that something that this board might want to look at going forward, similar to what COS looked at doing with some of their surplus or vacant undeveloped property, was working with a developer to have that property developed, turning it into ongoing lease income or an outright sale of that property. There's, there's all, different alternatives there that we can look at as potential funding mechanisms when you're looking at, you know, potentially a six million dollar hit just to make these buildings work for our departments. So I'd just throw that out there.
Fun, you got the fact too, that if we move fire out of the CDF's, the old CDS offices, that's going to be a savings right there, so that's going to help too.
And I think what Supervisor Vanderpool's referring to is, I recall, I believe there's two pads, I think, that are already entitled, if I'm not mistaken, on the parking lot that could be used for commercial purposes.
Correct, two parcels.
And those, again, the opportunities perhaps to work with a developer to come up with a plan to provide either ongoing revenue to the county or one-time funds that could be used to offset these expenses. I think it's a good idea.
I would hope the committee would talk about these things, but there's a lot on the plate. We have major remodels to do. I'd like to see two or three of those behind us before we even consider doing something new and becoming developers in a community full of developers.
No, and, and, well, and not to interrupt, but I definitely agree, but you know, looking specifically at the Office of Education... But, you know, looking specifically at the Office of Ed buildings that we have right here next to us, I mean, they were vacated in December and we still, that is occupiable space. It had worked for Office of Ed for a very long time. Now we have different departments with different needs that are going to be located in these facilities, but we've just got to get moving. So I don't think that we tackle what I just mentioned before we get these projects moving forward. But I think it's something we have to keep in the back of our mind and maybe the committee can look at it as we move forward to find a way to fund these things.
Well, and to kind of respond to earlier comments you made Supervisor Vanderpool, remodeling can be very expensive. And you never really know what you're going to find until you get into the building and start opening up walls and so forth. And usually what you find is not good news. It usually means more money. So we're wise to be well-prepared for that sort of thing and have adequate contingencies. And I think you're right though Supervisor Cox said, you know, we do need to be forward and we've got a lot on the plate and a lot of the things are kind of moving at all at the same time. But we mainly have to kind of marshal our assets and interest on particular projects so we can get those done. Deal with the uncertainties of what remodeling costs are going to be before we can, you know, maybe step forward on some of the other projects. But a lot on the plate here and, but, you know, at the end of the day, will be so advantageous for county, county staff and the public in terms of our ability to provide better services and also cut some of these costs that we are now renting out in other places. So great projects.
I do have one quick question. Did, when we started through this process and identified budgets were blowing up in an exponential rate, did we tell our space planner to stop?
Correct. As soon as, as soon as the first conceptual plans came in and we saw the cost, they were put on hold and they've been put on hold for several months. They're willing to get right back to work as soon as, as soon as directed.
They are.
Yeah. Thank you prevailing wage.
Mr. Chair, I have motion to approve if there's no other questions.
Voted by Supervisor Cox.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Vote unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, John. Okay, let's, let's go back to our timed item, public hearing. Request from Resource Management Agency to certify that the board has reviewed and considered the information contained in the categoric exempt for the seed ed project pursuant to 14 California Code regulations. Mr. Washington.
Good morning, Chairman, Board, Fatah, Mr. Winton.
After you follow Hess, you have to make adjustments.
Today we have, for your consideration, a general plan amendment number 2016-A, which really consists of two projects in two areas of the county. I'll walk through each one of them visually. First one is GPA 1602 Said. It's a request to change the land use designation from agriculture to general commercial. Includes a zone change from AE 10 to CE, or C2, commercial. It's located south of Porterville within the urban area boundary, but it's outside the development boundaries. It's on the corner of State Route 65 and Teapot Dome. It's on the southeast corner there. There's a gas station there. This gives you a little, you can see the, on the left-hand side, the site is, again, just outside the UDB and a sphere of influence and, but it's in, within the UAB, which is the blue line to the south. And the aerial photo shows, shows the gas station there. The, the project is to expand the service station to the east. One pump will be removed and five new pumps and a canopy and a scale will be installed. And this pursuant to seek was categorically exempt because of minor changes to an existing It's within the urban development boundaries of the city of Porterville and subject to Chapter 2, the Planning Framework, the Memo, Memorandum of Understanding between the county and the city. And under General Plan Policy PF Ford 19 in RVOP checklist was completed and it scored 11 points, which is in the, subject to allow a change. And also this has been aligned with the Porterville ultimate circulation as, as Porterville grows out. The reason that the project is becoming before you, one of the main, main points is that Caltrans is widening State Route 65 from two-lane to four-lane highway. And the project is going to be reconstructing the Teapot Dome and State Route 65 intersection, adding additional access, control extended on the Teapot Dome. And 13 feet of additional rideaway will be taken from, from the existing project. That's what's eliminating one of their pumps and, and really causing this to move forward at this time. The applicant and Caltrans are still working out the agreement regarding the rideaway take and, and access to that. But that's really what's driving this project. Under the Porterville County MOU, we've been, reached out to the city of Porterville throughout this project, all the way from PRC through the general plan initiation, the PC hearing a couple of weeks ago, as well as today's hearing. And we've, to discuss the situation with them. And this has been a fully two-way cooperative and they've issued that they don't have a comment. They don't have an issue with this project whatsoever and we received a letter from them stating so. Here's a map of the site and the general plan designation is ultimately for the city to the north. You can see commercials planned for the city eventually on the north side of Teapot Dome. And on the west side is, the lighter purple is for like an industrial park type of thing and then more manufacturing in that darker. And, and I know you all heard about the electric bus company. That would just be a little bit further to the west down that, that way is where, just to kind of get you an idea of where it's located. And then, then this is the zoning map that we're looking at. Change of zone there. The second project is GPA 1601. This is for Nunley Driven Construction outside of Tulare. The change of land use designation is from Mooney Corridor to Mixed Use. And it would also include a change of zone from AE 20 to C2 as well. This is located on the east side of, of Mooney Boulevard, directly across from the winery there in Tulare. As you can see in the map, it's within the urban development boundary, across from the winery on, on State Route 63. But in the aerial photo, you can see that it's a, it's a fairly small, it's about two and a half acre lot, but it's a triangle shape. Kind of difficult for, well, certainly difficult for agriculture to, to be done on that. There's irrigation canal to the, to the southeast. You've got the highway to the west and then the orchard to the north. Again, it's about a two and a half acre lot, but by the time Caltrans takes its ultimate rideaway, you're looking at about an acre and a half usable space there. The project is to build an 8,000 square foot office storage building for driven construction. And as I said, it's two and a half acres, but by the time the rideaway is taken, it's about low over an acre and a half. State Route 63 is adjacent to the west and as mentioned, the irrigation canal and orchard. Site's within the city and county urban development boundaries and is designated a Mooney Corridor. Although that plan has been suspended, they're still never changed the designation until, until such time that the county will adopt a new, county adopted urban development plan for the city of Tulare. It's kind of just sitting out there. Category exemption based on new construction of small facilities because this is under 10,000 square foot building. Under this, the general plan, we did a RVLP checklist on this as well and it scored six points because it's again, adjacent to urban development. And according to our, our general plan policy 4.8, the designation of, of mixed use is as closely aligned to the city of Tulare's designation of village. Because mixed use has flexibility in, in the types of uses. So that would be the closest that we could come in our toolbook of, of land use designations that would come as close to matching Tulare's designation. We reached out to the city numerous occasions on, again, on every step of the way. The city had sent a letter, in a couple of letters in response. They were concerned about setbacks for Mooney Boulevard, ultimate rideaway. They were concerned about the village designation and they wanted to make sure about the city development standards. So basically, all, all the project is really where, we've already worked with Caltrans, the setbacks to the ultimate rideaway. So that's not an issue. As I just mentioned, the village designation, mixed use is as close as we have in our, in our county's toolbox. And the development standards, the, the development will be required to do this curb, gutter, sidewalk adjacent to the city with the same standards of, of the city. So there was an added concern of the, at the planning commission, the neighbor to the north that had the orchards was concerned about, because of the C2, that other uses could go in there besides that. So we actually put a condition in, in there that, he was concerned like if there was a, some sort of an assembly of people or like a restaurant or something, that it might hinder his ability to farm, actively farm. So the applicant is agreeable and they're, they put a restriction on it. Until such time as the other land is developed as urban, it won't change use. It will be a office warehouse type of thing. So they put that restriction on it. Here's a map of, of that project. You can see the triangle just, just to the east of city of Tulare. And the zoning map is what's being proposed for that, that spot that is currently AE 20. So with that, staff recommends opening a public hearing, certifying the CAD exempt as prepared for each individual project, adopting the findings of approval and the map changes for the general plan amendments and zone changes as set forth in the planning commission recommendations to your board, their resolutions. And adopt the entirety of all the findings and actions as detailed in the staff report as one general plan amendment number 2016-A, which was the first general plan amendment of 2018. I'm open for questions. Board?
Any questions in the board? Okay, seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to either one of these issues may do so at this time. Mr. Winton?
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Jim Winton. Business address is 150 West Morton in Porterville. I'm here in behalf of Nagi Said, the general plan amendment there on Teapot Dome and 65. I think the staff report is complete and they really covered the, I guess, the motivating factor for what, why we're here. And that's that Caltrans zoomed in and took out just enough rideaway to make the existing diesel pump inaccessible. And they're taking one of their two accesses of Teapot Dome, two Teapot Dome away. The present circulation within the site leaves some things to be desired. It's not real good right now. So this expansion to the east will allow them to improve the circulation and to relocate and expand their diesel facilities. So that is, in a nutshell, is why we're here. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I just want to make a comment that we often talk about unintended consequences and usually that's in a negative situation, right? But one of the unintended consequences of these road construction projects are things such as this one in that we had several of those happen in the Dinuba area when they did the expansion on Alta and on now on El Monte. And I have to tell you, in every instance, it's been a very positive outcome. It's an opportunity for people to take their businesses and to make adjustments and make them more business-friendly, expand their businesses. And at the end of the day, it'll be a more viable business. It'll be a better business. It'll be a more profitable business, we hope for, Mr. Said. And it actually will generate a little more revenue for county Tulare as well. So there are unintended consequences of these road construction projects that we don't necessarily contemplate. But as we look at removal, in this case, this was a very nice facility, but sometimes you've got some old and dilapidated type of structures that get removed. And the replacements are invariably up to code, new construction, more, more advantageous for the businesses and for the public. So this is a great project and highly supported. Thank you.
Thank you. I do think it's going to improve the site quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak to either one of these items? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, if there are no further comments, I would like to move for approval of this item.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, seconded by Supervisor Cox. The vote is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number 75. Grand jury response. Julieta Martinez.
Good morning, everyone. Board, CAO, County Council. So I come to you one more time with another grand jury final report. The report includes one report that requests responses from your board. Draft responses were included in the agenda item. For all reports, respondents must address each finding stating either agreement or disagreement. The response must also address each recommendation stating if it will be implemented or not. Of course, if further analysis is needed, it must be completed within six months. I will be reviewing the draft responses for your consideration citing recommended determinations. Please let me know if you have any questions or modifications to the draft. So the one for your consideration today is entitled Auditor's Audit Failures, which includes four findings and one recommendation. So I will list them as follows. Finding one states, while the county auditor treasurer maintains records pertaining to which special districts are in compliance with the provisions of Government Code Section 26909 and those which are not, the county auditor has not made a practice of publicizing non-compliant issues. Response from your board, the board partially agrees with this finding. All documentation submitted is subject to the Public Records Act and available to the public upon request. The second finding states, failure to strictly adhere to the provisions of Government Code Section 53952 have created a situation wherein the county auditor lacks the financial leverage, which would otherwise be provided to enter into contracts with independent certified public accountants or public accountants to conduct the audits necessary to bring non-compliant special districts into compliance. Response from your board would be, the board does not agree or disagree with this finding. This finding is not under the purview of the Board of Supervisors. Third finding, it appears that there has been no appreciable effort on the part of the office of the county auditor with respect to bringing the districts into compliance. Response, the board cannot agree nor disagree with the finding since the board does not have knowledge of the responses the auditor's office has received from the non-compliant entities. The board will continue to collaborate with county departments to host the yearly Government 101 sessions that present information to special district representatives regarding compliance issues and requirements. The fourth finding states, in many cases, the certified resolutions required by County Government Code Section 53952 are not on file with the office of the county auditor. And again, it is not apparent that effort has been expended on the part of the office of the county auditor to remedy the situation. Response, the board cannot agree or disagree with this finding since the board does not have full knowledge of the interaction between the special district and auditor's office in acquiring missing resolutions. There was one recommendation provided in the report and states the following, the office of the county auditor exercises due diligence in the execution of duties and responsibilities of the office, particularly as it pertains to adherence to County Government Code Sections 2700, 26909, 53952, 53953, 53961, 61052, and 61053. Response, subject to appropriate budget review, the county administrative officer will make every effort to provide reasonable financial support for the audit program referenced by the auditor controller, treasurer, tax collector, registrar, voters in their department response as pertaining to California Government Code Section 26909 and a potential contract with a certified public accounting to conduct an annual audit. Pertaining to the remaining sections, the recommendation will require further analysis. The board will work with our CAO to identify the need for additional accounting staff in the auditor's office should the non-compliant special districts remain after the two-year period outlined in the department response. It is requested that you approve the draft response with any changes you may want noted and any clerical corrections and authorize the chairman to sign the response letters.
Thank you, Julieta.
Any questions, comments?
Questions from the board, comments?
Nice radio voice.
Thank you.
Okay, is this, this is, is this an action item?
Yes.
Okay. Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor.
Hang on.
Yes. Chairman, can we take a short, five-minute break for one second? There's an issue.
Relative to this matter?
Relative to this matter. Okay. We'll take about a five-minute recess.
Interesting.
That's true.
Just the chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Vice Chair.
Does he know?
Let's keep this thing going.
Someone tell him we're in.
All right.
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay.
Chatty.
Okay, we're back in session.
Yes, one more time. I just need to make a couple clarifications. Counsel pointed out to our responses. I do not need to go through every single finding again, but we'll just repeat the responses. These were included in your pocket, packet. You do have the correct draft in front of you. So again, response for finding one was, the board partially agrees with this finding. While the board does not routinely publicize non-compliance, all documentation submitted is subject to the Public Records Act and available to the public upon request. Finding number two, response is included in your packet. The board does not agree or disagree with this finding. The finding is not under the purview of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Government Code Section fifty-three nine fifty-two relates to a special district's decision to establish a revolving fund. Response in finding three is outlined in your packet. The board cannot agree or disagree with this finding since the board has no knowledge, independent of that received from the auditor, of the auditor's efforts to bring districts into compliance with applicable sections of the California Government Code. Additionally, it is not clear from this finding with what the auditor is allegedly not making efforts to bring the districts into compliance, nor whether the board or the auditor has any authority to do so. The board will continue to collaborate with county departments to host the Government One Oh One education sessions that present information to special district representatives regarding compliance issues and requirements. Response for finding four, the board cannot agree or disagree with the finding since the board does not have full knowledge of the interaction between the special district and the auditor's office in acquiring missing resolutions. Additionally, it appears to be the responsibility of the special district under Government Code Section fifty-three nine fifty-three to transmit the appropriate paperwork. And finally, the response as included in your packet to the first recommendation, this recommendation will be implemented as it relates to California Government Code twenty-six nine zero nine. Subject to appropriate budget review, the county administrative officer will make every effort to provide reasonable financial support for the audit program referenced by the auditor controller, treasurer, tax collector, registrar, voters in their department response as pertaining to California Government Code twenty-six nine oh nine and a potential contract with a certified public accountant to conduct annual audits as required by law. Pertaining to California Government Code Sections twenty-seven hundred, fifty-three nine fifty-two, fifty-three nine fifty-three, fifty-three nine sixty-one, sixty-one zero five two and sixty-one zero five three, the recommendation will require further analysis. Not all of these code sections impose duties on the auditor. Some are district obligations or standards, non-compliance with which many, which with, may be identified during an audit pursuant to Government Code twenty-six nine oh nine, but over which the auditor has no control. The board will work with the CAO to identify the need for additional accounting staff in the auditor's office. The board will continue to work with the auditor to provide education about compliance. So if there are no questions, this is the final responses. Thank you to counsel for their input and help.
Well, thank you, Julieta, for clarifying that for us. We appreciate it.
Thank you to Maria Erickson. She's wonderful.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, just to, just to make a quick comment, you know, we, uh, it is mentioned in here and I'm really glad that we did mention it, uh, about our, uh, effort to, uh, help special district board members with the Government One Oh One sessions. Um, and I, I do appreciate the auditor's office, uh, joining with county council to put on, uh, some of these training, um, sessions that we have. But at the end of the day, there are responsibilities of, uh, special districts that, you know, we as a county can't necessarily, uh, force or monitor them, uh, in performing. Um, however, we do serve the same constituencies and, uh, that is why we put out money and put out effort, uh, to put on the Government One Oh One sessions because we are not mandated to do so, but we want to help those special districts to serve our constituencies, uh, to the best of their abilities. So, um, I, I'm not going to, uh, admit fault. Well, first of all, because I'm not the department head that runs, uh, the auditor's office, but, uh, on behalf of the county, uh, I just think that it's, um, we're doing more than what we're supposed to, uh, and what a lot of other counties do for their special districts. Um, and I just want to make sure that that point is noted. So with that, I will move for approval of this item, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Worthly. Cast your votes. Vote unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Julieta.
Thank you.
Okay, that pretty much finishes up our open session. Uh, do we have a need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. Item A is off calendar. We have items B through I and we do expect a, uh, an announcement now.
Wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, uh, holiday and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
And be safe and be careful with your fireworks, right Chief?
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
If it explodes or flies, it's illegal.
Closed session, item B. Paul Grunsman and Julia Jimenez versus County of Tulare, Tulare County Superior Court. On today's date, June twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, the Board of Supervisors rejected settlement offer regarding the above litigation by a vote, by the following vote. Supervisor Worthly motion and seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. It was unanimous vote. I have more. The Board of Direct, the Board of Supervisors Director, Legal Counsel to defend the case of Renfro Margie versus Tulare County Ag Commissioner Seeler and John Does in Tulare County Superior Court Case VCU two-six-four-six-one-zero. The adversary party is Margie Renfro in purpore. The vote was motioned by Supervisor Worthly, seconded by Supervisor Ashida. The vote was unanimous. This case alleges the county was overworking the plaintiff and creating a hostile work environment. Plaintiff further claims that the county failed to take all reasonable steps necessary to prevent harassment and discrimination against the plaintiff. Closed session, item E. Jacqueline Blake versus County of Tulare WCAB number FRE zero-two-zero-seven-four-four-zero. The Board of Supervisors approved the settlement of the mentioned litigation by the following vote. Supervisor Cox by mo- made the motion. Supervisor Ashida, second. The vote was unanimous. On June twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, the Board of Supervisors approved a settlement of the case Betty McGill versus County of Tulare, claim number one-two-four hyphen zero-seven-five-six-two-nine. The board had the following vote. Motion by Supervisor Worthly, seconded by Supervisor Cox. The motion was unanimously approved. Closed session, item G. Airplane CL, sorry, airplane C T L S N-nine-one-one TS. The board approved settlement of a potential litigation against the county by the following vote. Supervisor Vanderpool made the motion. Supervisor Worthly, second. The motion was approved unanimously.